I don't really have a script for the work session.
No, pretty much I am your entire work session, sir.
Okay, as far as telling everybody about what we're doing here, I'll just, I'll kind of use, see if that makes sense. Yeah, I'll just use the first part of the regular session one to kind of tell people what we're doing. All right?
Yep.
Okay, rock and roll. Are we rolling?
We're going, yep, we're live.
Okay. Calling the work session to order. So before we begin this meeting, it is being held through Zoom video conference. All non-city participants, microphones have been muted. Presenters and members of the public will be unmuted if you're called on to speak. We ask that all participants label their Zoom user to show their first and last names for the record. For those calling in, we ask that you email OCR@MilwaukeeOregon.gov and provide your name and contact information for the record. The chat function will be disabled for most of the meeting and will be turned on when comment is taken. We ask that all participants be respectful and remember that anything written in the chat will be part of the meeting record. If participants disrupt the meeting, we will unmute and remove, or we will mute and remove them. If those measures fail to stop the disruptions, we will recess the meeting and return within five minutes. If we are unable to continue, council will briefly meet off air to move unfinished business to the April 21st meeting. Alrighty, so our first item on the work session is council compensation, and this will be presented by our city manager.
Thank you. We have had several conversations with the council since the November meeting in which we were presented with the findings from the jury, the citizens' jury. They met that first weekend in November and came back to us with a document that was included in this week's packet as a link on the November date. The question tonight is whether or not we want to make changes before we go into the budget process for council. Those changes could be twofold. One is whether or not you want to make changes in what an allowable reimbursement would be. And then the second one would be whether or not council would be interested in voting on a resolution or an ordinance somehow tying future pay to the CPI as was recommended in the recommendation from the jury. So with that, I'm really going to turn it over to all of you. As a reminder, if we do talk about future compensation, anyone who is possibly going to run for future election should disclose that they have a potential conflict of interest.
Should we do that before we start the discussion?
That's great.
Well, I do have the possibility of running for election again, and so I have a conflict of interest.
Hi.
Go ahead, Lisa.
I would say the same thing. I potentially could run for office again, and so I have a potential conflict of interest.
Angel?
I as well. I have the same conflict of interest.
And strangely, as it may seem, I actually can run for mayor again too, because my first term was partial, so I guess I potentially have a conflict of interest. So.
I don't.
You're sure about that?
Critician. Although, after all this time of isolation, I'm not certain.
We're probably, we're not voting on this during the work session, though, are we?
No, we're not, but I mean, so the concept is twofold. One is if you do want to amend what the allowable expenses would be, I need to know what allowable expenses you would want considered for reimbursement. And then I also need to know if you are looking at tying the increases either to the CPI or to some other number for that matter, so that we can draft you a resolution and ordinance for adoption. Right now, we don't have anything that's binding, and I don't have anything to send to the Oregon Ethics Commission for review. So this really is giving me enough tools so that I can send that document.
And just to, just to refresh our memories, their actual recommendation was a one-time adjustment to match what CPI would have been from 2007 and then CPI going forward, right?
Correct. So they, and I can even read this in just so the public has it. The top three bullets, and I think the ones we're really talking about tonight are one and two. Based on the 2007 to 2019 rate of inflation, set monthly stipend amount for the mayor from 300 to 369, and for council members from 250 to 307, and in the future, adjust according to the biennial budget based on CPI. That was the first bullet. And the second is technology tools, public transportation, and child, elder care reimbursement provided on an as-needed basis to help the mayor and city council members perform their job. Benefits should be capped to not tax it, to not burden the taxpayer.
Okay, so this is WILDA. So that's the part that especially interests me that we need, I think, to have some discussion on, because I can certainly see, let me lower my hand. I can certainly see where there, as we've talked before, there may be some other kinds of things that come out of, and I would take it that it would still be the same amount of money that's in the budget. What is it, like $3,000 for each counselor? And generally, that goes for mileage reimbursement, meals, education, conferences, that type of thing, right? You know, so things like childcare and maybe there's something additional besides just mileage. Like we were talking about, what if somebody had to take an Uber, you know, to someplace or something like that? Although with everybody as always willing as they are to give rides to everybody else, you know, that shouldn't happen too frequently. But what besides, I mean, just to get the conversation started, are there things besides childcare and possible other transportation that folks can see that maybe it would be beneficial to have it in there? Because I don't, I don't know what those might be, you know?
I think you brought up excellent, you know, excellent other things that we should be considering. You know, I think that we are lucky to have such a, you know, a relationship such that, WILDA, you don't ever need to, you know, you can often find a ride.
I know, thank goodness.
Not everyone is that fortunate, so I don't know that, you know, I'd want to put, you know, I think that, you know, people have different needs.
Absolutely, yeah.
And we should be, you know, thinking about as many, you know, possibly, you know, different scenarios and different circumstances that people find them in. And so I also really appreciated the group's insight around not just childcare, but also elder care. You know, the different types of, you know, reimbursed, you know, expenses that people, you know, these are real barriers to serving in public office. You know, setting aside the non, you know, the low pay. But in terms of expenses, I think that we should be, I think we should be really thinking quite broadly to try to remove as many barriers as possible.
Uh huh, yeah. I think that, I think that makes sense. I, I'm not sure I'd be in support of, I guess it would depend on what, you know, any big increases to those accounts as they currently are. I think if I remember correctly, it's 3,000 for each city counselor and 5,000 for the mayor. Is that correct? Yeah.
It is. Just to throw it out there for anybody that's thinking about being the mayor in the future, that isn't sufficient to be part of the, the U.S. Conference of Mayors. And do anything else.
Yeah, maybe, you mean to go to the conference, because.
You have to be a member to go, and the membership is like $1,900. And the conferences, there's two conferences every year, and they're, you know, you're going to spend 1,500, two grands to go to the conferences. So just to throw it out there, that's why I've never gone. But Nap goes, Axelrod goes, Truax goes.
I think the point in that, that it is that it's not just for big cities, that it's for smaller cities, medium cities, big cities, whatever. But part of that, and I think that's another conversation we need to have at whatever time, is the dues to join that. The dues, I don't think should come out of the city councilor's stipends. I mean, I, I had to pay partial dues in one of our organizations this past year, and so it left me with, you know, if we were having other, you know, if I was going places and doing things, I have no other budget now to do that because I paid for dues. And I'm not saying this just because it's me, but I think it should apply to everybody. It's like, we either pay dues out of city council budgets or we don't. You know, we need some kind of decision factor on that. But as far as attending the conference, perhaps that's something that, depending on the topics, and if the mayor felt that it was important enough that they could come to the city council or the city manager or somebody and say, hey, you know, I need an extra $2,000, because roughly, right, to go to this particular thing, you know?
A couple of things on that front. The first is, if we want to have a discussion about the dues for different organizations, we can. But the way it has worked to date is that if staff feels like a membership is necessary for their work, then the department is paying for it. If this is something outside of that work, that's when council, if they're still interested in joining, has been asked to come up with the funds from, from the council budget. It doesn't mean that you can't have a separate dues pot that all of those are coming out of, which we do have right now. The reason that WILDA paid for this one was because that pot had already been assigned by council, and so we didn't have remaining budget. If you want to increase that budget for dues memberships, you can. And I don't think that there's any concern about moving those expenses over, but you're going to see a simultaneous budget increase or we would have to reduce it from other parts of the city council budget.
Right, yeah. Well, you know, for me, this year, I mean, it was a little bit of a surprise because we've been a member off and on, I guess, maybe not consistently with the Business Alliance, Clackamas County Business Alliance, for the five years that I've been on city council, so.
But that's the interesting thing is I don't think we ever were, I don't think we've ever paid for it, and so that's part of what happened.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Well, and I guess, I think the dues, I mean, it seems like League of Oregon Cities and National League of Cities might be a separate thing than other. I mean, that may be something that a city council would always want to be in and always choose to do. Some of these other things, I mean, whether the city council wants to do them will change over time, you know?
That's probably true.
And so, yeah, that, I mean, to me, I hate to, I hate to, I think that's a bigger, another conversation, a bigger conversation than, and maybe will, you know, impede us getting to resolution on this.
We do have that conversation coming up, Councilor Beatty. It's a part of the budget process when we get to your budget. And I have asked Leila to come prepared to speak to Councilor Park's specific ask. But I think that if you want to hold on the conversation about increasing the amount and you all want to focus on what the reimbursable expenses could be, I think that that's probably the best way to get through that portion of the conversation tonight.
Yeah, yeah, well, I'm all in favor of, you know, for those, I guess, I, WILDA, childcare or elder care, whichever, but, you know, or care for somebody else in your household that can't care for themselves. I mean, I don't know how you frame that, but whatever. But I'm not sure what kind of parameters or should there be any or whatever you put around that. That's where I don't have any ideas. I'm hoping other people, you know, might have some thoughts on that. But if it's just in your budget, I mean, you know, if you still have money in your budget, you can do it. I mean, that could be it too.
Well, I, I actually have a concern about that because I don't want us to create a situation where we are penalizing someone who is caring for someone of any age at home by saying we can pay for childcare or care up to a certain level, but then you don't necessarily have any money for education or other opportunities. So if we can structure this in a way that is flexible enough that it, that it's inclusive and it's not just a, well, you can count this money toward this, but then you don't get to do other things, then I, that's.
And that's, that's the rub. It's like, you know, what if somebody wanted to go to LOC, but they've already used their budget because they had to have it for childcare or whatever? No, believe me, I totally understand that, I agree. I don't, but that's what I mean. I don't know, I don't know what kind of parameters you'd put around it. Or just leave it up to people, individuals, to determine how to use that money that's set aside for each council position. I don't know.
Well, I was going to say, I guess I would ask Ann from a budgeting standpoint. Like, I hardly use any of my allocation. I mean, if I go to LOC, I use it for that, and I guess it's used for when I go to Clackamas City's dinner. And that's really about all I ever use it for. So then 2,000 or whatever comes, doesn't get used, it rolls over. If we upped it to 5,000, say, to allow people to have the, you know, who might need the childcare or family member care. And we, but we have, you know, multiple counselors who aren't using that, say, and who are, you know, again, returning three-fourths or three-fifths of it or something. Is that a problem budgetary-wise and planning-wise?
So a couple of things. One is, this is not going to be a great budget year. So I just want to make sure that I'm really blunt about that this year. And I'm not saying that to say you shouldn't do this. I'm just trying to be transparent that I'm simultaneously having discussions with staff about reductions. But having said that, Councilor Adma actually had funding that he allowed other people to use in his pot because he didn't use it. I don't think he expended any money out of his pot ever. And so there has been some flexibility. You all could choose to make it more universally available so that council members could tap into it as needed, and when the money was gone, it was gone for everybody. Most people do not expend all of their money. I would say that it's pretty uncommon, actually, that we get to zero.
So maybe the idea is not, yeah, not to create it as, I mean, because I think I also offered, I don't know if it.
You did.
Used my money for somebody, for the mayor or somebody to go to something. But, so maybe the idea is not have individual pots, but have a common pot.
I think we'd have to be cautious with that, too, because there are, I mean, I don't think you want to give just any, anybody, whether it's me or anybody else, more or less just carte blanche to.
Well, I mean, you still have to submit receipts, and they still have to come in with these categories. We're not saying that you're.
They have to be, that's true, they have to be.
Margarita.
But, you know, I could decide that I want to attend every luncheon that's held anywhere in the county because something could be pertinent, and I don't think that's how this money should be used.
But we also could make it just more formal, what Councilor Beatty and Councilor Adma have done in the past, right, with allowing for people to turn back money to increase the other pots of other counselors. Like, it doesn't have to be a full, everything goes into a singular pot. It can be, I'm not going to, I need $500 this year. The rest of the money can be allocated to another counselor as needed. I think that that's probably the most respectful way, to allow every counselor to have the access first, but then to move the funds as they deem appropriate for the team, if that's fair.
Yeah, I, I think that makes a lot more sense.
Yeah, yeah.
And I mean, apart from, to me, the only category of things that was really sort of new was the family member care, because transit passes or Uber rides could be, would cover now, right? That's no different than mileage on your own personal car, right?
It hasn't been clearly stated. I think that it's, it's worth putting into a resolution just to make sure that it's clear to the public that we're allowing for those reimbursements. And I think that it's also respectful to the jury who put those pieces in, that, that you all appreciated their feedback and input on that front, and that you want to make sure it's clear to everybody that we can use the funds this way.
Yeah, so if we said transit, so that would include like Trimat or Smart if you were in Wilsonville, or Uber or something like that, right?
Yeah, I think we can write it in a way that makes that clear.
Okay, okay, yeah. And family care, I mean, does that, is that clear enough?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Councilor Faulkner, I did also, actually, to all of you, there was also a point made about using this for technology. I don't know what that means today, but one of the things that's jumping to mind as we're all sitting on a Zoom call is that depending on what the next year looks like, having Zoom accounts or having ways for you to connect with your public might be another reimbursement that you would choose to have. So I think it's probably worth including that recommendation from the jury as well, even if we don't have a plan today as to how you would want to expend those dollars.
Web cameras.
Web cameras and microphones, yes.
Yeah, that sounds reasonable, yeah.
So is there anything missing after those three items? Is there anything else people would want us to work into a resolution?
Well, and are we, in this resolution, are you also talking about the stipends? So going with the recommendation and bringing it up to date and, and that? And then we've got to check with the Ethics Committee still yet, right?
So that's actually why I can't answer that question tonight. I did have a great conversation with the Ethics Commission this morning. Diane is continuing to work with us to make sure that we structure this in a way that meets all the guidelines and also meets the intent of the citizens' jury. So she's been lovely, and so I told her we would get back to her with what we were looking at doing and some of the format options, and then she would get back to us with which way was the most transparent by their, by their rules.
Okay.
And if we're going to do that, can we take it to a round number instead of whatever the, I was trying to find that calculation again, you said.
It was actually written onto the document. So it says the base would be for the mayor from 300 to 369 and for council members from 250 to 307. To be really irritating, if you tie to the CPI, it is going to be down to pennies every single time we do this. So you can do it the first time, but the reality is if you want to do a tie to CPI and you want to adopt their recommendation, it's probably best just to adopt their recommendation. It's the cleanest option back to the Ethics Commission. And so I, I wouldn't make small changes on it. If you want to make a big change, make a big change, but otherwise, we would just send this directly to the Ethics Commission.
Right, because you could round it to 375 and then two years.
Next year it won't be.
Yeah.
Next year it'll be and since.
Yeah, yeah. So there's not a lot of point to trying to.
Yeah. I'm good with the recommendation.
Me too.
Okay, and so I just want to confirm that part of why I like the CPI versus the COLA is that you don't vote on the CPI. So just being transparent to the public, the reason that I would recommend you go with the CPI, not the COLA, is because you never have a say in it as a council member, which means I think we can start applying it each time we approve a budget. So we're working through that with the Ethics Commission, but I think that's probably the cleanest way to apply that.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other changes then, before we send this over to them to get a document that you can approve? Okay, the final piece then is that we will make sure we call out the, the amount of money allocated to the council during the council budget process. So we'll have that discussion with them and the Budget Committee.
Okay, great.
All right.
Perfect.
Good. All right, our next item is council meetings' schedule flexibility.
And I'm actually, Scott said this was me, but it's actually Scott. So I'm going to invite him if he's able to jump in here.
Sure, well, just briefly, it was a part of a conversation that was had offline that we thought should probably be done online. With this unknown and uncertain new world of video meetings, social distancing, one thought that has come to mind is that there's potentially flexibility in city council holding meetings generally the same time, but maybe a little earlier to get started earlier and things like that. As you may recall, annually, city council adopts its schedule of meetings by resolution, the first meeting in January. And for work and study sessions, council meetings are completely flexible and at the will of council before, after, or regular session meetings or whenever. But for regular session meetings, they are designated right now and have been for a few years now at 6:00 PM on the first and third Tuesdays of the month. The question staff just wanted to pose to council in a public meeting was, is there interest in bringing that resolution, a pretty simple resolution, to a future meeting to, in some way or another, do away with the 6:00 PM hard start time? So that during now and in other circumstances in the future, it's possible council could hold, convene a regular session at a time other than 6:00 PM. And I don't think I missed anything in that, but that's, that's the general gist. Is council interested in relaxing at 6:00 PM regular session start times?
I think that that's everything. The only discussion that Scott and I had is that we were planning on some very long regular meetings without having any work session content, because so much of what we're doing right now are big decisions. And so we're starting the meetings later, which means we're pushing some of you to stay up later than you would need to, because we would normally be starting at four, and we could get you out earlier, but it's totally up to you.
I'm all in favor of early is fine, but, you know, that's just.
And I'm the opposite.
I know.
I think that, I mean, I'm generally in favor of flexibility. So like, the idea of an ordinance that says we're not locked in the 6:00 PM is okay with me. But when we are back to, when more, more people are going back to a workplace, a 4:00 PM meeting, we know there are people, including the head of our Parks Board, who hasn't been able to come to meetings. This was an issue for me all the time when I wasn't on council, inability to make it to work sessions. So I'm not for generally starting earlier, but to give us some flexibility during however long we're doing social distancing, I mean, I'm not averse to that.
Yeah, I think the other piece that I have on that is, you know, people get used to when our meetings are, and they're not necessarily going to look at each thing and say, okay, when's the start time this week? And then we'll hold some meeting that starts at four, and they want to really testify, and they come in at six.
I see that as a downside, yeah. See that as a downside.
So if, if we do it, I think what we should do is say something like, in special circumstances with at least two weeks' notice and something, some other way to call people's attention to it, like in really large letters, in red, it will say, odd start time, something, I don't know.
I think that, Mayor, I, I like doing some, an addendum about special circumstances. I would be cautious about putting too many rules around it after the week I've had the last three weeks. Because you just don't know. You don't know why we would be doing it, and so giving that council at that time some flexibility is, is what I would encourage. But I do agree that staff is hearing you loud and clear that you'd like the priority to be on keeping the traditional times whenever possible.
And, and making it very, very obvious and clear when we do, do something.
Yeah, like using social media to say it and, you know, yeah, really being public out there that it's changed this week, yeah. Yeah, like this week, I don't think we did that, you know, we moved work session, but we didn't say that as far as I saw on Facebook.
We didn't change anything, it's.
Yes, we did, we moved work session.
Work session is defied.
Well, and we, we have treated this only as the sessions where the public are invited to come speak. So in places where the public is invited to come speak, we need to be. So in places where the public is invited to come speak, we need to be very clear about what time, because it's at the start of the meeting, and I think that's where I completely agree with all of you, is making sure that that's consistent and known.
Still public meetings, even if they're not invited to come speak, and, you know, they might be interested in the council conversation thing, whatever.
But they could watch that on YouTube later or whatever. That's, it's really about them commenting where it gets thorny, I think.
Well, and we didn't start earlier, we started later.
Yeah.
So they're just frustrated and not, they didn't miss it.
Right, they tuned in a half hour too early, and then they forgot to come back.
So generally, are you okay with us bringing a resolution that makes it flexible, but is clear that the intention is to hold it at the same time consistently when possible?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I like the special circumstances wording, without going into a lot of definition about what that means, 'cause you're right, it could mean darn near anything. We never expected it to mean something like this.
Didn't see this coming. That sounds great. We will get something for your next regular session for adoption.
Cool.
Great. And I think that's everything we had on the agenda for the work session, Mayor.
Okay, so then we will go back, we will go into the regular session at 6 o'clock. I believe it's a different Zoom link, is that right, Scott?
That's right, different Zoom link.
Yeah, go ahead.
Two sort of, I don't know what they are, housekeeping questions, I guess. If we're doing a pledge of allegiance, are we all standing up? What are we doing?
I'm not gonna stand up, 'cause otherwise you'd be looking at my belly button and.
Well, I would stand up off camera if I stood up.
I've spoken to.
It's kind of weird to be sitting and doing a pledge of allegiance.
The only reason we decided to leave that in is just to try and keep as much normalcy to this as possible. I don't have strong feelings about leaving it in or not leaving it in, so if you guys think we should just.
Darren, our AV, our AV guys queued up to show an image of the flag, so nobody would be on camera per se.
There you go, so you can, you can choose to stand or not choose to stand, it's your call.
Okay. And my other question is for Scott, which is, I know Zoom has a, in fact, I was trying to play with it, but I haven't, I haven't had a lot of success, a, an ability to put a background photo on you.
Yeah.
Like, here, you can see, like, I've got some different lighting issues behind me. And I guess, is that something you can do from there, or we just each have, individually have to do that?
Each user has the ability to do that, and I don't have that control, but you have to go over your stop. If you've got your mouse on, and you're gonna hover in the corner where it has the video, and it probably says, "Stop Video Now," there's a little up arrow, and on the little up arrow, it says, "Choose virtual background."
Right.
That's where you would upload the video, and that's completely on individual basis, the host doesn't control that.
Okay.
See, WILDA looks like she's got grass behind her now.
Yeah, but it's all, like, moving, it's not good.
Ideally, you gotta have.
I was gonna say, I had, that's why I was asking if you had any control, because I had tried that.
Yeah.
This meeting, and it was all glitchy, it was all, like, they really intend you to be in front of a green screen when you.
Yeah, that's a good point, yeah.
That's right.
And the other thing I would throw out, because I was doing so many of these, and I was watching other people on them, and every, a lot of people do it, and they're backlit, or there's something, and they're just these black faces. I would recommend, so here's the way these cameras work. They try and make everything, they, they average all the colors in it towards a neutral gray, 18% neutral gray, which also means they're averaging the exposure. So if you look in your thing, and your face is super white, like, like Justin's, that has to do with, with what's, what's around him, and it's trying to average out. So I played around with mine, and I got a light to put on the other side of my monitor so that there's light in my eyes, so I'm not this backlit thing. But just to throw it out there, if this ends up being something we have to do for a long time, you might consider pulling the lamp around and having it, you know, on the other side of your monitor or something.
Which I just did, and you can see that I looked more colorful now.
I need to get the glare off me, I don't know how to do that, 'cause I'm sitting by an open window.
Yeah. While we're on this topic, I have another housekeeping question related to Zoom. We're now out of sharing mode, and there will be times during a meeting where there's a presentation you need to see, but when we're not, is it okay to see the slide with the agenda item, and just the talking head is out of preference? That was a recommendation I got from a Clerks Association, but there's also this ability to see all the talking heads like Brady Bunch style. I'm seeing some nodding heads that's.
Well, I, I mean, I don't know, I think when, it's just my opinion, but I think when people are watching our meetings in general, they're looking at all of us to see how we're reacting to testimony, to a presentation, and if all they can see is the person who's talking, that can be frustrating.
So, I can try to play with that, cutting back and forth. I don't want it to be distracting or in any way disrile, derail.
I mean, aren't people who are calling in getting the same strip of pictures down the side or across the top like we were getting?
I think if you're calling with just your phone, you might not be seeing any of this.
Oh, well, no, if you're calling with just your phone, but if you're, if they're dialing in using Zoom and using Dumber, which was on the agenda, so they can do that, then they'll, they can page through and see whoever they wanna see, even when the presentation's going on, right?
That's true if they're calling in. If they're just watching on YouTube, though, they're gonna be at the mercy of the setting that I have on the laptop. I have two laptops running, one that I'm running as host and one does the presentation over here, which is what's being seen at home. So maybe send this to the experimental meeting for us, I'll try it, 'cause I, I guess, seeing all the heads talking is good, I'll try to balance it. If you have any notes or don't, I'd be happy to entertain them.
Use your power wisely. I'm gonna go eat dinner.
I'll see you all in a little bit.
All right. Eat a few, okay, bye.